Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Policy Subcommittee of Little Compton School Committee on December 2nd. If everyone could please rise for a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Under God and divisive with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. First up is COVID-19 vaccination requirement policy. So we have a running draft. We've made many changes over the past at least couple of months, maybe a few months. I feel like we're at a pretty good spot. Mariah, would you mind putting that up on the screen? Thank you. We have a few a few adjustments I feel like we need to make. And some concerns. But as a whole, I'm pretty comfortable with this policy. Sean. Considering that we would like to make sure that we revisit this policy like frequently. There seems to be a lot of concern that we're going to be stuck in this policy forever, which is not our intent. And so to put some minds at rest, we've put a right now, an end of March review date. I understand we can change that, but considering that's the review date. Under COVID-19 vaccination requirement, that paragraph. Number one. What do you think about us saying all union employees and school committee members? Have the have the how did you want to do this Hannah? The continue on with this, the six weeks to become vaccinated. Whereas visitors and volunteers would need to be vaccinated upon entering the building now.
Was there, was there a question?
I think all we have to do then is I think Sean, what we're trying to do is just say specifically that employee, non-union employees and school committee members would have the six week kind of period to get their vaccination and prove that they've been vaccinated. Whereas in the second paragraph, we talk about volunteers and visitors and we'd like them to be vaccinated or show proof of their vaccination immediately upon approval. So would we just, I think that's all we would have to add to number two is upon approval of policy or or do you think that that, do you think how it's written is clear?
I, I, I think that how it's written gets to the point that you're trying to get at, which is non-union employees, school committee members and third-party contractors have the six week, what's called a grace period. And everyone else, non-union volunteer, says nine, that's all, non-union volunteers and visitors. Don't know if the non-union piece is really necessary for employees, it's cut out. But the volunteers and visitors would, upon passage of the policy, need to immediately, if, if they're trying to enter, immediately show proof of vaccination. That's how that would, that's how I would interpret one and two.
Excellent. Thank you.
So then all that needs to happen there is just delete non-union off of the second bullet.
Great. Further down, under enforcement. We've sort of left any visitor who fails to comply with this policy shall, I'm assuming not be admitted into the school is fair enough.
Yes, I really think that's pretty much all you can do, assuming with, with the visitor is not entering the building.
Super. And then any school committee member who fails to comply with this policy.
Be the same.
Okay. So I have seen that the state of Rhode Island is going to be releasing a app, a phone app that will allow people to prove their vaccination. Would it be helpful for us to put how people, a, a means of how people should present their vaccination status? Should we say that we will, I, I'm trying to figure out how to make it easier for our staff. Instead of having a hundred different methods of people proving their vaccination. Maybe a preferred method, or is that something that the school can send out later? Like there's this app that works really well, it would make things easier if we, you know, if you could download it and present your I, I'm trying to streamline and make
I, I think there's two ways you can approach this. You can say the vaccine card, any technology developed by the state of Rhode Island. And we kind of list those out, or you can leave it as is, and the administration can kind of be flexible as new technologies are developed around this particular issue. Proof of vaccination, as far as I know, you're going to show either a medical note signed off by a doctor or the now infamous card.
Right, if I may Polly.
Yes.
Just think of how iffy and spotty the coverages in terms of Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
And cellphone service. At the vaccination clinics when we're, so sometimes that's not a reliable yeah, avenue for, for that sort of thing. So I like what Sean said.
Okay, I was just trying to come up with a you know, an easier process, try to make it easier, but maybe that's something that will develop over time.
Yeah, it might be some elderly people who don't
Yep.
Have access to a cellphone or might be, you know, sort of tech shy or
True, yep.
I think the card is always the official way, but I, I can tell you the IT department will certainly find the most efficient way to do it digitally.
Okay, I just didn't know if we needed to include that, but as long as we're good with not including that, that's fine.
I think something that we were talking about, and then I don't know if it ever made it in, I don't know if we ever really had any concrete decision on it, was what we should do in event of emergency with third-party contractors.
Yeah.
Because it was discussed that what if the only person we can get to come fix our boiler is not vaccinated. So
So I think this is what you mean, in cases of emergency, as authorized by superintendent or his or her there designate, an employee, volunteer, visitor, school committee member, or third-party contractor may enter the school without demonstrating proof of vaccine and shall adhere to social distancing guidelines.
Does that need a separate heading or that works under proof of vaccination?
I think for organization's sake, it might be worthwhile to just have that, have a separate heading, emergency.
Emergency, okay. Are you able to edit right on there?
Okay, I am editing, but I'm not live.
Okay.
Okay. I am editing super background.
Is there anything else anyone wants to add specifically to this policy?
I have, I have a few things I wanted to raise with the committee.
Okay.
Just some questions, if we can scroll back up to definitions. We look at the employee definition. Any person employed by or receives compensation from the Little Compton School Department who was not a member of a collective bargaining unit, including substitutes. When we say including substitutes, I'm assuming that we mean they're, they're going to, they're going to be included in the definition of employees and they're not exempt such, like, like the members of the collective bargaining unit are, correct?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so that I thought was perhaps a bit ambiguous, that that being tagged on towards the end and thought that maybe after Little Compton School Department on the first line, comma, including substitutes, comma, who, you know, not a member of a collective bargaining unit, might make that a bit clearer, open to discussion on that point, but I just felt that having that tagged on towards the end, to me, when I first read it on the first read-through, that was not, that was not clear what we were trying to accomplish there.
Okay.
My second question is, under scope, the third paragraph, third, third sentence. Seems referring to the facility use policy, doesn't really seem to fall under scope, so similar to the emergency paragraph that we're referring to, if we can just put that under some other heading, just for organization purposes.
Okay.
Would that be under enforcement maybe or?
Yeah, I think enforcement is, we can define enforcement broad enough to, to include that, that makes, at least to me, more sense than putting it under scope, so.
Okay.
Under COVID-19 vaccination requirement, we keep scrolling down. This first sentence, all employees, volunteers, visitors, school committee members, and third-party contractors shall show proof of vaccination subject to a medical exemption set forth below. And a vaccination schedule, I'd say the vaccination schedule as follows. It's a small edit.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it though.
Sorry Sean, do you mind repeating that? I was just doing the last one.
Yeah. So this is under COVID-19 vaccination requirement, so towards the bottom of the first page. And that, that first sentence under that heading, second line where it says, subject to a medical exemption set forth below. And a vaccination schedule as follows, I would say the vaccination, the vaccination schedule.
Thank you.
And then finally, if we scroll down to records, this is just more tightening up of language. That first line under records reads, all medical records obtained throughout the course of implementing this policy. And then it has, quote, vaccination medical records, end quote. We can just delete the first portion of that and start the statement out with vaccination medical records, since that word is defined in your definitions as any medical record obtained throughout the course of implementing this policy. Just cutting down on some verbiage.
Okay, super. Making it a little less confusing, straightforward. Anything else Sean?
That's all I got.
Anything else? Good. Anyone here have any concerns, questions, comments? No. Lori, is there anything that you think that we may have forgotten or we should add or consider?
I mean, I think the procedures regarding verification of vaccination, you and I hashed that out. Maybe Attorney Clough could weigh in. You know, when we write policy, we sometimes forget just how we're going to actuate it and, you know, how human resources will be allocated. So this is not anything that'll be voluntary when there's a school-sponsored function. You know, we would want scheduled, compensated staff members who've been trained to implement this. Otherwise, we could have a function, volunteers don't show up, or someone hasn't been trained and you know, there's, there's, there are inefficiencies. You know, we could have a super spur event because someone was inadvertently, you know, so, so many things could happen and attorneys go there and so does superintendents. So the fact that I will require paid, scheduled staff members. I don't think it has to be folded into the policy, it'll be definitely a practice. Sean, what do you think?
I certainly think that with the option of any policy, being aware of the administrative burden to implement such policy is important. It doesn't need to be necessarily written into the policy, but being aware of that, the cost involved is all important when considering policies that are being proposed. And I do think that it is important, particularly when you are collecting medical information that you have, strictly trained staff that is participating in those type of activities. Especially since not only is it medical information, but we have to maintain, per the policy, confidential records, so we don't, we want people trained to understand that and follow the proper protocols relative to maintaining confidential material.
Right, so there's a whole other layer here in terms of staffing this verification mandate. So I'm sure the school committee is aware of that, but it will cost money and it will require training. You know, so that it's accurate and expedient and follows all privacy.
Absolutely.
Regulations.
Absolutely. All right, so if there's no more concerns on this. We do have the building use form policy on the agenda. Facility. Use of facility, we've called it building use forever, I haven't gotten used to the name change. Is that, oh, that's already up, thank you Mariah.
Oh, no.
Isn't it already up?
Nope.
No, oh, sorry, it's a use of facility at the bottom of that, but we're all set. So Lori, I'm assuming you want to add some information in this regarding a vaccination policy.
Well, I mean, the vaccination policy only applies to school-sponsored events, am I right?
Yes. I think the only thing that mentions the facility policy is that we won't schedule school-sponsored events in, at the same time when a school facility form has been filled out.
And that's right in the policy, I mean, I think this week I signed six or seven use of facility forms, so the building is being used more and more as, which is a good thing. So I think we're covered. I think we were going to open this up if we were going to apply the vaccination mandate to all activities within the facility. And we would charge the organizers of those events with, it, it just would be so unwieldy and likely unnecessary, so I think we're good.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Would I be able to jump in for just one second?
Sure.
This is not related to implementing any sort of additional language relative to the vaccination policy. I did notice when just reviewing this. Section, certain sections refer to user groups, some sections refer to groups, some sections refer to third parties. We don't need to necessarily go through it right now and waste the committee's time on this, but if Mariah or someone can just go through and make sure that there's this consistent term use. That would just kind of clean up the, the policy a little bit. And then my other question was, if you scroll to the last page. It looks like there is some procedure here. Item two, once the application is complete, it should be date stamped, the principal will sign off one way or another. And I'm not sure what that, what that means.
Where are you Sean? Are you on facility use or?
Sean, if I may, I believe this policy took ten years, it was maybe
Facility use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it took years, I think, for various iterations of the committee to land the plane, so you're picking up on you know, some legitimate, yeah, that is odd, the principal will know, oh, let's see, the principal will note, that's weird. I think we lost that. Okay, once again, you should be date stamped, the principal will sign off one way or another, we all sign off. Custodial maintenance, building admin, and the district, and so that is odd.
Yeah, I'm just not entirely sure what that means one way or another, what that's getting at and I, I
It's weird.
So just wanted to bring that to the, the committee's attention. Just the consistent term usage and then that last piece, if, you know, maybe the, the procedure that is actually in, in use could help clarify these, these steps, but I understand that the purpose of tonight was more making sure that the vaccine required policy meshes well with the facility use policy.
Yes, and I will put this use of facilities on here again. With that piece in mind. I don't want to sit here and read through the whole thing while everyone waits for me, that just wasn't my mindset for this policy, so just so we can get that cleaned up and it makes a little more sense, but.
Chair.
Yes.
I would love to help with that.
Okay.
If, if, if it makes sense, I don't know how much work was put into this specific piece, but just from looking at this, it seems like it is very specific to a process.
Okay.
Which this process itself, I'm sure is, is, is a good process. But we have been moving, moving a lot of our processes more towards digital.
Okay.
Work, work type workflows.
Yep.
And this, this does outline certain things, like we kept a paper copy stapled together at the main office.
Okay.
So it might be worth going through some of that wording.
Okay.
To keep the same process in place, but make it a little more digital friendly.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's only been like eight months since we finally approved this policy that took us like three years to, but but I'm, I'm happy to update it, that's fine.
And I don't think we would need to change anything substantial about it, it would really just be a few words here and there that are specific to staples.
Awesome, is there a Caroline that, yeah. Or a comment?
I don't know. You should be able to unmute yourself, I don't know why you're not a panelist.
Hi, I just wanted to, Jonathan, you said exactly what I was thinking, that this is pretty much the process that we follow in the main office, and I'm happy to help out, Jonathan, as you do turn this into more of a digital process, but you said almost exactly what I was thinking. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have public input. So I'm going to ask everyone to raise your hand when you get called on, please cite your address, your name and address. All right.
One hand up right now, it's Nicole.
Okay, Mr. Nicole.
You should be able to unmute yourself, if you could please state your name and address.
Hey, did that work?
Yeah.
First time digital, thanks for, uh, thanks for having us. So, okay, Matt Nicole, 40B Old Main Road. I, I appreciate the amount of attention you all are putting into this, I really would love to know more about the definition of fully vaccinated. You know, I, I, I hope that you're all paying attention. In the UK, they've just moved boosters to mandatory every three months, so I'm assuming will fall somewhere in that world, is that, is that the plan? And since, you know, the Department of Defense mandate got struck down because there is no such thing as an, an approved vaccine and it's not possible for the government to mandate the emergency use vaccines, I'm curious if we have any liability risk there by asking people to take this not approved drug. So anyway, I'm just curious, um, you know, if there's a definition of fully vaccinated, or if we're going to let someone else define that as it goes, thank you.
Thank you. So Sean, I am
So
sure you would not lead us astray with this approved vaccine.
Yeah, so we, we require that any approved FDA-approved vaccine for COVID-19 be utilized under, under this policy. We can certainly define fully vaccinated, I don't think that the policy is defined as such, I think that if the policy is silent on it, the administration would certainly be in a position to define what that means, and I think that we can certainly go with the what, what, what we're now considering full, full, that fully vaccinated in this country with the two or the one dose in the case of Johnson and Johnson, so there's, we haven't seen anything from this, the United States government or the state government looking to define that to include boosters at this moment, and you could also put in policy. We're going to define fully vaccinated as the CDC and the federal government define fully vaccinated, and then your policy will mirror what is the policy of the experts at the CDC and Department of Health.
As I'm reviewing it in March, also protect us from the booster question as well.
Yes, I mean, you have your, the, the, the thing with the definite, the, having the definite review in March. I think that's a good thing to have with this particular policy, since things are changing rapidly. But the school committee is within, well within its purview to retake any policy and modify it at any time, it's not like because it says review it in March, you're stuck with what you have until March. If something changes in January or February, you could take the policy back up at that point as well.
Excellent, thank you. Could we hear from Andrew Ryan next, please?
If you could unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Andy, excuse me, Andy Ryan, 40 Page Brook Road. I, I also had a question about that, I couldn't see the screen when you were editing because the fully, the vaccination status or the, what was declared, what vaccination was, was kind of at the bottom of the screen. And so I, for example, have to have my tetanus shot boosted on a regular basis, or I'm not eligible to work in my lab. So if I fail to get my boost or my doctor make sure I get that, so I'm actually vaccinated against tetanus, so and, and many vaccines are three-dose vaccines, I mean, so, and I think, you know, things are evolving and, and it makes sense, I think, to and I was going to suggest this as well, that you be careful about what you call fully vaccinated, so that it would allow something to change if for some reason the, the CDC or the FDA decided that three doses was now what was required to be fully vaccinated, you don't put yourself in a box that you shouldn't, you didn't have to come back out of.
Yeah, thank you.
Maureen Rego.
Sure.
Maureen, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Maureen Rego, 16K Mullen Hill Road. I'm curious if someone can tell me how many communities in the state of Rhode Island are implementing things such as 100% vaccination for teachers and now 100% vaccination for visitors, parents, staff. As far as I'm aware, it's only Little Compton and Barrington, am I right about that? And, and specifically, I guess Barrington with teachers, have they also moved to being sort of extreme, like our own school? Thank you.
Thank you. I personally am unaware of who else is doing what. My main concern is my role of the, as the chair of the school committee is keeping our school and our community safe. So while I do follow national news and national studies. follow national news and national studies.
Oh my gosh.
Excuse me?
Maybe that's the problem, but okay, keep going, I didn't realize I was still unmuted.
Um, yep. Um that um my main concern is the safety of our students and our staff. So um what other school committees are doing currently, I don't know, I don't have um time to check in on every school committee and what they're doing, this school committee keeps me pretty busy as it is. Um so um I, I don't know, uh Sean, do you know of any other schools?
I don't know of a concrete number, but there are certainly more districts than just Little Compton and Barrington, I do know.
Also considering it, sorry, Sean.
Yes, there are other districts that are considering it, and in terms of implementation, I know that there are uh other districts that have entered into agreements with their bargaining units to mandate for their employees that vaccinations are going to place.
Right, I am, I am sure there's a lot of meetings going, going on across the state, you know, so.
I think too, one thing we are seeing around the state is schools aren't letting anybody in, period. And the, the aim of this policy is to let you come into the school, um that is really our goal here. And while it might not be codified in other districts, that's their unofficial, no one's let in, like we are trying to hammer it out, who can come in, when, where, why, how, and make it so that we can all enjoy the building and our events again.
Right, so in reality, relative to the policy that you're referring to. Uh this is less extreme and more about opening up the schools.
Right, right. Is there any more questions?
I don't see any hands at this time, uh we have another hand raised from.
Okay.
Okay, uh Andrew Ryan again.
Yeah.
If you can unmute yourself.
Uh thank you, I, I just had a question unrelated to this topic. It's a policy question, but I don't know if it involves, like, it may be something that you have to think up, maybe something the superintendent can just do. Uh but the test and stay program is being extended to other school districts that, that want to utilize that. Um and so I know that, I believe Little Compton's uh was very interested in trying to get into the pilot of that. Uh and so I, I didn't know if we could get a little update on the plans for using that. I, and also I think some school districts don't allow vaccinated children to participate in the test and stay, to be tested at all. And so um I, we didn't know how that would work, because our kids will be fully vaccinated here in another, I guess, week and a half or a week or so.
Sean, would I be?
I was just gonna say, we, we can't talk about it, because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but.
Please tune in to.
Next Wednesday, school committee.
Okay.
For some information on the subject.
Yeah, my recommendation with the superintendent can answer a, a, a specific question, but the uh committee members should refrain from any discussion.
Okay, so I will answer it. Dr. Ryan, we did get the green light this week to implement uh the test um to stay program. We, like you, wanna make some tweaks, we have to reach out to the Department of Health to get permission to tweak it. And a couple of the tweaks we're considering is extending it to grade seven and eight, because it is a K six program. And we also discussed today, um the COVID team, which is the nurse, principal, and superintendent. We discussed today possibly testing our fully vaccinated kids as well. We're not sure we have the human resource capacity, so, but we will be um implementing it. And there's reams of paperwork that we started going through today, and a memorandum of understanding, legal documents as well. So yes, I did push something up to the community, October fifteenth, um in one of my updates, that we were um interested in participating in the pilot, Westerly was chosen, and likely because they're a bit larger than we are. And you know, it could be um, you know, larger scale uh pilot. And it was obviously um a very successful pilot. And so the data compelled the state to offer it to um all districts. We expressed an interest, obviously, and the deputy commissioner reached out, sent us our packet, and we should be ready to go before long, but there are pieces of it that we need, that we want to tweak, we need permission to change the framework.
Great, thank you. Any more questions? Any more concerns in the room?
I don't see any.
Nope, is that a chat, is there a question in the chat?
Uh that was from something else earlier.
Okay. Oh, we need to approve the minutes, I'm sorry. Um all right, so I would um entertain a motion to approve the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one policy subcommittee meetings, minutes.
Move, so move.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries, no one else has any more questions, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn at six thirty-six, so move.
A second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all for attending, thank you.
Bye.